Welcome to a broadcast of the recent Lorraine County Commissioners' General Meeting. Unless otherwise announced, meetings are held Wednesday morning at 9:30 at the Administration Building, 226 Middle Avenue, 4th floor, downtown Alariah. These are public meetings and you are invited to attend. Agendas are posted prior to the meeting at www.lorainecounty.us. Click on Departments to see the Commissioners' page, then click on View Agenda.
If you'll please rise, we'll begin with Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
And our word for the day comes from Romans. Why then criticize your brother's actions? Why try to make him look small? We shall all be judged one day, not by each other's standards or even our own, but by the standard of Christ. And Nelson has our dog this morning.
You need the mic. Nelson, you have the microphone? Yeah, no, that's working. It was, I heard it.
It's working?
It's working.
Okay, we have a female boxer Shar Pei pit mix, which has been there since the 16th. She's definitely looking for a home. She's been available since the 21st last month. A great dog, about two years old, and we also have 27 more at the kennel. We should appreciate the help. Anybody can come and act as animals, so, good dog, so, all righty.
Thank you.
Madam Clerk?
Are we going to go straight to the meeting?
There we go.
Or the hearing? It's not? Oh, okay.
Under Resolutions Number One, Investments.
So move.
Second.
Discussion, Mr. Lundey.
Aye.
Mr. Kayla.
Aye.
Ms. Kowski.
Aye.
Appropriations.
So move.
Second.
Discussion, Mr. Lundey.
Aye.
Mr. Kayla.
Aye.
Ms. Kowski.
Aye.
Transfers.
So move.
Second.
Discussion, Mr. Lundey.
Aye.
Mr. Kayla.
Aye.
Ms. Kowski.
Aye.
No advances, no repayments, requisitions.
So move.
Second.
Discussion.
Yes, I actually crossed one out yesterday, and I'd like to hold it. It's regarding DR and mental health. I had a call into Jody Barilla yesterday, and she did call me back this morning, and we got to talk briefly, but I'd like a little bit more clarification on that issue. It's like a $57,000 requisition. Can we hold that particular item?
Sure. Yes.
Mr. Lundey.
Aye.
Mr. Kayla.
Aye.
Ms. Kowski.
Aye.
Travel.
So move.
Second.
Discussion, Mr. Lundey.
Aye.
Mr. Kayla.
Aye.
Ms. Kowski.
Aye.
Bills.
So move.
Second.
Discussion, Mr. Lundey.
Aye.
Mr. Kayla.
Aye.
Ms. Kowski.
Aye.
Under the airport advertised bids for rehab taxiways at the airport, notice being chronicled on July 11th and 18th, and open at 2:00 PM on July 27th.
So move.
Second.
Discussion, Mr. Lundey.
Aye.
Mr. Kayla.
Aye.
Ms. Kowski.
Aye.
Travel.
So move.
Second.
Discussion, Mr. Lundey.
Aye.
Mr. Kayla.
Aye.
Ms. Kowski.
Aye.
Bills.
So move.
Second.
Discussion, Mr. Lundey.
Aye.
Mr. Kayla.
Aye.
Ms. Kowski.
Aye.
Under the airport advertised bids for rehab taxiways at the airport, notice being chronicled on July 11th and 18th, and open at 2:00 PM on July 27th.
So move.
Second.
Discussion, Mr. Lundey.
Aye.
Mr. Kayla.
Aye.
Ms. Kowski.
Aye.
Under the order, authorize payment to Revere Title Company in the amount of $7,100 as reimbursement for an overpayment of conveyance fee. Real estate office had sale price of $4 million and fee paid with $16,000, but the actual price was $2.225 million.
So move.
Second.
Discussion, Mr. Lundey.
Aye.
Mr. Kayla.
Aye.
Ms. Kowski.
Aye.
Under the Commissioners, authorize various personal actions as indicated on the summary sheet for employees within jurisdictional Lorraine County Commissioners.
Minister Cortez.
Thank you, Commissioner. I do have a few potential hires, Collection Center and 911. I also want to update you on a union negotiation, United State Workers of America, and potential sale and purchase of real estate. All three of those topics are allowable under the Sunshine Act for executive session discussions, so I'd ask at the conclusion of our regular meeting, we go into executive session, we talk about those issues. Thank you.
Approve and waive the reading in the minutes of June 29th.
So move.
Second.
Discussion, Mr. Lundey.
Aye.
Mr. Kayla.
Aye.
Ms. Kowski.
Aye.
The Village of Grafton withdraws municipal annexation petition for Eaton Township.
So move.
Second.
Discussion.
Just wanted to make sure if there were any representatives from either Village of Grafton or Eaton, if you had any comments on this before we voted. I mean, basically, the annexation petition has been withdrawn. Yes, okay, if, please come up to the podium. And for the record, if you'd just give us your name, address, all that formal stuff that we require. Sorry to make it so formal for you.
I'm Attorney Al Schrader, representing Eaton Township. We're glad to hear they're withdrawing it, and we appreciate that, and we don't really have anything more to say today. We might if they refile. So if you could please put us on the agenda, if there is a refiling, then we'd like to talk to you. But thanks, have a great day, appreciate it.
Thank you.
I don't know if I said it, but for the record, I'm Attorney Al Schrader. I represent Eaton Township, 441 Wolfledge Parkway, Akron, Ohio, 44312. Thanks.
Thank you.
Should be doing disclaimer on car ads there, that was pretty fast.
Yep. Really fast.
Okay.
Mr. Lundey.
Aye.
Mr. Kayla.
Aye.
Ms. Kowski.
Aye.
Under Children and Family, approve an interim purchase service contract with Childcare Resource Center from Family Support Services for fiscal year '17 in the amount of $15,000 effective July 1st, 2016 through June 30, 2017.
So move.
Second.
Discussion, Mr. Lundey.
Aye.
Mr. Kayla.
Aye.
Ms. Kowski.
Aye.
Under Community Development, award contract to Solid Ground Construction, Inc., Westlake, in the amount of $42,530, which includes a contingency for any unforeseen change orders for grant assistance from CHIP program year 14 for David and Loretta Dunlap at 17325 State Route 58, Wellington, for private owner home rehab.
So move.
Second.
Discussion, Mr. Lundey.
Aye.
Mr. Kayla.
Aye.
Ms. Kowski.
Aye.
Award contract to Concrete and More, Inc., Avon Lake, in the amount of $4,400, which includes a contingency for any unforeseen change orders for grant assistance from CHIP program year 14 for Sandra Dell at 134 Parkwood, Avon Lake, for storm sanitary lateral separation.
So move.
Second.
Discussion, Mr. Lundey.
Aye.
Mr. Kayla.
Aye.
Ms. Kowski. Aye.
Under Workforce Development, renew the MLU between Workforce Development Agency and Community College Able Consortium to assist WDA in providing academic skill supplement for employment and training services to participants deemed in need by staff of Ohio Means Jobs Lorraine County. This is effective retroactive July 1st, 2016 through June 30, 2017, in a cost of $23,346.
So move.
Second.
Discussion, Mr. Lundey.
Aye.
Mr. Kayla.
Aye.
Ms. Kowski.
Aye.
Approve an interim purchase service contract with Steven Hugel, Avon, to provide professional shopping services available through Rio and other affordable funding, effective retroactive July 1st, 2016 through June 30, 2017, at a cost of $40 per referred participant and assign no more than 50 participants during the contract period.
So move.
Second.
Discussion, Mr. Lundey.
Aye.
Mr. Kayla.
Aye.
Ms. Kowski.
Aye.
Under the engineer, approve an interim agreement, 812915 CSX Facility Encroachment as part of the Pheasant Run Sewer Improvement and Lift Station in La Grange Township.
So move.
Second.
Discussion, Mr. Lundey.
Aye.
Mr. Kayla.
Aye.
Ms. Kowski.
Aye.
Do we want to do the public hearing now?
Sure. Okay. Madam Clerk, we're going to move to the public hearing.
This public hearing is scheduled for today for the purpose of providing additional general revenues for Lorraine County for a continuing period, an increase of the existing tax levy pursuant to Ohio Revised Code Section 5739.026A2 and 83 in 5741.023 by one quarter of 1% for a continuing period of time for the purpose of providing additional general revenues for Lorraine County Transit and general revenues for Lorraine County General Fund. And within that resolution, we did designate at that time 25% Lorraine County Transit for five years and 75% for General Fund.
Okay. So at this time, we'll open up for public comment. This is our first sales tax hearing. Sure. Either one, Brian.
Okay, thanks.
And if you'll just, everybody coming up, you'll just state your name and address, that would be great for the record.
Good morning. I am Brian Frederick. I live at 32529 Northwood Court in North Ridgeville, and I want to thank you for the opportunity to speak on behalf of Public Transit for Lorraine County today. As Vice Chair of Move Lorraine County, I want to reiterate Move's rationale and request to dedicate a full quarter percent sales tax to public transit. Move's vision is for a county transportation system that is sustainably funded, so the system becomes a backbone of economic growth and opportunity in Lorraine County. Similar to 911, transportation needs a dedicated funding source so that it doesn't again fall victim to either-or choices when economics are tight. Arguably, it's during these economic downturns that we most need reliable transit system. Move's vision is for a county transportation system that is smart in its design and operation to get the best possible system for dollars available. We need a system that uses best practices and a vision for the future, and we need to leverage every available local dollar and work with every available partner to get the biggest bang for our buck. Move's vision is for a county transportation system that is accountable to the public to ensure real value and earn continued public support. This is a given. But most important, Move's vision is for a county transportation system that is capable of significantly meeting the transportation needs of Lorraine County residents, both in the county and regionally. It needs to be of sufficient size, scope, and frequency to adequately connect people to employment, to education, and to healthcare, so it can be an investment, not just an expense. Our process has been straightforward. What's the need? What's the plan? What will it cost? Will voters support it? Our research indicates that a system with 10 strategically placed routes, 14-hour-a-day service, and seven days a week, and 30-minute wait times is a minimum that we should shoot for as a county. This is a definition of a system that can provide real transportation options to get folks to jobs, education, and healthcare. Even this won't solve all of our transit needs, but it's a goal. It's a reasonable start. To coin a phrase, it may not be a Cadillac, but it certainly is a good solid built-in Lorraine Ford. Our research indicates that a system with these features would cost $9.3 million in local support, which will leverage additional federal dollars, but which will still fall short of our neighboring Stark, Lake, Summit, and Cuyahoga Counties. We know that a full quarter percent sales tax would be regarded to provide the local dollars needed for such a system, and our polling indicates that Lorraine County residents would support the tax if they knew that it was to fund a transit system that's smart, sustainably funded, accountable, and adequate. Knowing the need, having a plan, understanding the cost, and convinced of voter support, Move stands ready to get a dedicated sales tax for transit passed in November. Now, we certainly are not insensitive to the fact that the county is facing unbudgeted expenditures, but the proposal to allocate only one-fourth of the 25% is grossly inadequate to provide the level of transit systems that we need in this county. No matter what the proportion, less than a quarter percent sales tax won't support a transit system with adequate size, scope, and frequency. It would be an absolute tragedy to waste money on something that is less than adequate. Something may be better than nothing when negotiating a raise with your boss, but this isn't the case with something as complex as transit. Just decreasing the frequency of our envisioned system from 30 minutes to one hour will cost close to $6 million in local funding, and one-hour waits are insufficient to meet local needs. We've all seen example of example of how inadequate solutions are often worse than waiting for a real solution to be possible. Move's bottom line has been and is a transit system with a 14-hour-a-day, 30-minute wait time, and 10 routes. This is the goal by which any discussion of money should be judged. What it comes down to is a matter of priority. Move believes that public transit is both a necessity and a priority. We know that the state of Ohio provides little support for public transit, and we all suffer, individuals in the county, because of that. And maybe at 11 o'clock today, Governor Kasich will have something in Valley View that will provide some additional resources, but we can't bank on that, and we certainly can't bank on that continuing. You have the opportunity to show the residents of Lorraine County that our county commissioners prioritize transportation and are willing to take bold action to help them get jobs and education and quality healthcare. The need is real, the time is now. We urge you to reconsider and allow Lorraine County voters to decide in November on a quarter percent sales tax fully dedicated to public transit. Thank you.
Thank you, Brian. Others?
My name is Mark Holman. I live at 1034 Rome Beauty Drive. Good morning.
Good morning.
I would like to start by thanking you Commissioners. Your service benefits Lorraine County every day. It is people such as yourselves who cause our American form of government to succeed. Thank you. Sometimes you are faced with important and significant decisions. We are here today to discuss one of those important and significant decisions. Since I was 16 years old, I've always owned a car. Anytime I want to, I can get in my car and drive anywhere I want to go. But some people aren't as fortunate. Some people don't have the resources necessary to own a car. We can do something to help those people. Helping them is the right thing to do. Additionally, Move Lorraine County's research indicates a robust public transportation system will contribute to economic growth. This commission has indicated it supports public transportation. I like sayings, and I would like to present a saying. Let's step up to the plate and place a sales tax on the November 8th ballot that provides adequate funding for a robust public transportation system in Lorraine County that will help people as well as improve our economy. This is the right thing to do, and this is the right time to do it. Please place a sales tax on the ballot that adequately funds meaningful public transportation that will make a difference here in Lorraine County. Thank you.
Good morning.
Good morning.
My name is Judy Riggle. I live in Oberlin, and I want to put a face on the lack of public transportation's consequences. Yesterday, I drove a friend from Oberlin to El Centro to get, actually, a check that she was in dire need of, and the social worker was too busy to deliver. And she talked about the kinds of jobs that she couldn't take anymore because she couldn't walk the distances to get to them. She said transportation five days a week did not get her to her job on Saturday and Sunday. She said waiting for an hour meant that she had to leave several hours, two or three hours, ahead of her job if she was to use that public transportation. And so the frequency of the routes and the wide distribution of the routes meant the difference between her being able to work and her not being able to work. So please, two days a week, five days a week, doesn't do it. An hour between stops doesn't do it. This needs to be fully, fully funded in order to be of use. The same person is going to take classes at Community College to upgrade her skills, she has no way to get there. So this has big ramifications. And if people are to improve their skills and train for the jobs that are available, they need access to the education and training as well as access to their jobs. Thank you.
Thank you.
Also, please, the fares need to be reasonable. I saw some figures about what a monthly pass would cost. That means not existing as far as this person is concerned.
Thank you. Good morning.
Good morning.
Hello, my name's Marco Cuevas. I live at 3534 Beaumont Drive in North Olmsted, but I work here in Lorraine County. I was born in Lorraine, and I graduated from Rookside, and after many, many years away, I finally came back to northeast Ohio, and even though I reside in Cuyahoga, I dedicated my time to come back and provide service to Lorraine County, working for a nonprofit. Couple of sessions ago, I was sitting in the crowd and listening to some of the comments, and I think that the argument of the need is there, it's solid, the agreement from the Commissioners is solid. I think what has been hard for people to articulate is their lacking faith of their government to handle funds appropriately. I think that starts up at the federal level, and just from their interaction in politics, it trickles down to the state and local levels as well. When things are coming up to vote, I educate myself. I personally feel that all levels of government need to be held accountable. One way to ensure that, for myself, is by knowing exactly where my tax money is going. I'm more likely to vote for something dedicated to one issue than funds that are co-mingled. This county is hurting. I see it every day. With all the work I do across the county, I hear all the time how transportation is one of the biggest issues that a lot of our social service clients face into getting that job, going to training, getting to the grocery store, going to their doctor's appointments. How do you answer the question, do you have reliable transportation to get to work? If you don't, and there's not a public system to back it. Firefighters are now out of work, the steel mill is all but dead, businesses and people are moving closer to Cuyahoga County, just look at Avon and North Ridgeville. For some side income, I'm a financial coach, I sit with clients, and I always look at expenses first. I spend up to three meetings with them, looking at their expenses before I ever even talk about their income. The reason I do that is because those expenses dictate their lifestyle. Why? Because more of the same, asking for more money, doesn't fix the issue. If I can work with a client and help them save about $9,000 a year, I think is what the average expense of getting rid of a car is, if they're able to save $9,000 a year instead relying on public transportation, their ability to be financially stable increases and allows them for less stress, for them to have less stress, and more opportunity to focus on the things that will propel them forward. From a business perspective, I heard somebody talk about investments. You have to spend money to make money. If you stop looking to capitalize on public opinion to fix past mistakes, which will only do one of two things. Either voters are going to be let down yet again because with suboptimal investment, the plan won't work, and once again, you'll get blamed. Or since you're asking for funds to be co-mingled, the issue may not even pass, and public transportation won't even be given a chance because the prospect of further misused funds may scare voters. As I said before, there's a general distrust from voters concerning fiscal responsibility. One way to gain that trust back is by being clearly transparent with the issue at hand. I understand that you have a budget crisis. I know you guys do as well. Public transportation is one major piece of the puzzle to fix it. I've been over to 15 different countries during my time in the military, and every area that had a robust, well-maintained, not haphazard, public transportation system was bustling with economic growth and sustainment. Allow the sales tax to be dedicated. It will ensure that the system is designed and supported the way it's required, and you'll have your income from economic growth to help with your budget crisis, and you'll gain some of the trust back from voters because you view this as an investment and not as an expense. Thanks.
Thank you. Thank you for your service.
I usually address the Commissioners, I think. I'm used to city council at Alariah.
Yeah.
And Mr. Cortez. Teresa Shea, 519 East Avenue. I have to read mine. I am here to speak for the silent masses who have not spoken, the citizens of Lorraine County with no transportation, and those that are concerned about it. We have a beautiful restored transportation center and no transportation for low-income, elderly, children, and all. Our transportation center is only for the elite of our county, as is the basic right to transportation. We have to come together as a community and a county. Supporting an entire system of transportation stops excluding all who are not good enough in this county. We can't just die because we are older and can't get around to where we need to go because transportation is a life and death thing. To some, sounds dramatic, but is a mere statement of fact. Heather Reich of Alariah set up community meals at St. Andrews Church, bringing other churches together to feed the hungry because everyone deserves to eat a good meal off of a nice plate. She lost her sight and took the bus to Cleveland to go to school. She knew how to help people with dignity. We need to research a transportation system that works and follow their lead. How do they do it? I grew up and worked in big cities, Minneapolis, St. Paul, and Los Angeles. Even the worst of them, Los Angeles, ran on schedule and had a place to call where they would ask you your destination and tell you where to catch the bus, the number, and also coordinate your times so you could be at work on time. Whoever has organized the so-called bus system here is not qualified and has failed. The hiring of a transportation expert who has successfully managed a big city needs to be hired. We need the same systems that are successful applied on a smaller scale here. We will then look very good to federal and state grant monies because we will be realistic and effective in our model. Any sales tax increase in its entirety must go for buses. If you think of it, sales tax includes all ages, old people, young people, children, all would be donating to our transportation system. Once the core is solid due to proper structure, due to our new transportation expert, also funded by the Commissioners and everyone in Lorraine County, then we can expand from Lorraine, Alariah, to many other areas. Lastly, we need to use our historic transportation center as the center of our bus system where the buses originate and people can call for help. It's big enough and good enough for all of us, not just an exclusive few. Thank you.
Thank you. Others interested in speaking tonight, or this afternoon, I guess, this morning, I'll get my time right. And our next public hearing will be in the evening, so I'll get my time right.
My name is John Passut. I live at 200 Kendall Drive, Oberlin, Ohio. I've had the pleasure of working with our Commissioners in the past on other transit-related attempts to bring back some of our bus system and bring back proper support, and we recognized at the time that we needed a lot more money than what we were seeking. So I know our Commissioners support public transit, and I'm very grateful for that. But what's happening right now is counterproductive to what we all need. Move, and I agree with Move, has requested a full quarter percent sales tax dedicated to public transit, and I believe we need that to get a cohesive public transit system that will allow people to transfer from one route to another route to get to their ultimate destination and back again, and a frequency that will support doing more than one thing in a day, if even one thing. A two-hour headway was by default. It wasn't anything that any of us wanted. But I'm concerned about the fact that we haven't been able to bring this process to resolution yet because we're running out of time to present our issue to the voters and get their full support, which we will clearly need in the fall. I think we have this year uniquely the ability to push this over the hump and get it passed. But if we dilute the money for transit, I'm afraid, will cost us too much in voting, and we'll lose the whole issue. We won't, you won't get the money that you want for other projects that the county desperately needs, and we won't get our public transit system. So I'm appealing to you for your support to please- So I'm, I'm appealing to you for your support to please help this come to resolution. Thank you.
Thank you, John. Morning, Bill.
William Harper, three eight five 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 Short Road, Penfield Township. Well, thank you, Commissioners Lundie, Kalo, and Kokoski for providing this time to share our perspective on your proposal for a quarter percent sales tax. I'm Bill Harper, Executive Director of United Way of Greater Lorain County, and also the Chair of the Executive Committee of Mobility and Opportunity for a Vibrant Economy or Move. Harry S. Truman, he was famous for being a plain-speaking, straight-talking president. He once said, "A pessimist is one who makes difficulties of his opportunities, and an optimist is one who makes opportunities of his difficulties." And I think that applies in this circumstance. And there's no question that we've had our share of difficulties in Lorain County. I recognize that you have had a great burden keeping our county government moving forward. A task made even more challenging by the actions of our governor and our legislature. That said, it seems to me each of us has a choice to be an optimist or a pessimist. An optimist would have a vision of great times ahead for our county, a time of civic engagement, educational achievement, living wage employment, strong families, and optimal health. Give 'em hell, Harry Truman also famously said, "I never really did give anybody hell. I just told the truth, and they thought it was hell." Well, folks, the inconvenient truth is that the lack of transportation options in Lorain County affects every sector of our community. We have an opportunity to invest more into a transportation system that has a financial payback. And research shows that expanding transit will improve our economy, create those greatly needed jobs, yield business sales, and increase home values. A strong system of transportation is critical to a strong, healthy community, and public transit is the backbone of such a system. A strong transportation system gets people to good-paying jobs and employees dependably to businesses, strengthening our local economy. A strong transportation system gets people to quality education and training, so they become part of our local workforce. A strong transportation system gets people to the services they need and the health care, which improves our overall wellness. In conclusion, I ask you, when it comes to the future of our county, are you an optimist or a pessimist? Please give us the opportunity to work together for a common vision and a bright future for all. Please give us the opportunity to make our case to the voters this November for the investment of a quarter percent sales tax dedicated to public transportation. Thank you.
Bill, I was just, I wanted to, I guess, drill down a little bit on the issue. You had sent us some correspondence. And, you know, this board is, has said that, you know, there's just, the votes aren't there for a designated quarter percent.
Right.
However, on the, the quarter percent, the, the board is committed to the twenty-five percent of the quarter percent for transit. And is firm, you know, in, in living up to that, to that commitment. I know everybody's worried that we're not going to live up to that, we would be required to live up to that for five years.
Excuse me, Matt, what is five years?
The first, the first, the first five years of the twenty-five percent of the quarter would be committed to transit.
What is for, it says for a continuing period of time. There is no timeline continued in the language. It is...
That's not the language. That's just that, but in the resolution, we put twenty-five percent, five years for transit.
Okay, I'm looking at what this is because that's just a resolution that can be changed. There's nothing that says it can be a five-year. Thank you. Okay.
Okay.
Clarification. What we did there is not what goes to ballots.
Right. Exactly. Right.
It would be by a resolution.
It'd be by a resolution of the commissioners.
But I, but I, you know, I, I just think it's important to have the public discussion about not being interested in the twenty-five percent, and, and your threshold is much higher. Maybe you should share that with us.
Well, I, I think that the, you know, I think one of the, one of the editorials in, in the local paper, in the Chronicle Telegram suggested, you know, we really need to get together on this. Can, can we find some common ground? And of course, our focus has been on what's the adequacy of the public transportation that we need and we can provide. And of course, our research, and we've been lucky to have lots of free consultation, particularly from Ken Sislack, who's a known expert in public transportation, has demonstrated that that nine to ten million dollar range of local funds is what's needed to provide the level of service that we think is, provides that Ford that we all, you know, that trusty Ford that we all want to have. And that involves ten routes, running fourteen hours a day, seven days a week. We'd also like to see, of course, a, a dial-a-ride service for people, older adults and, and people with disabilities, and particularly the less populated parts of the county. So, you know, one of the things that, Matt, we had, had suggested was perhaps we could find some common ground in terms of splitting this tax if, if there were sufficient funds to deliver that, but perhaps by either partnering with RTA or other methods of reducing the cost of delivering that, you know, that level of service. That's, that's kind of what the suggestion is. Obviously, you have, our focus is on what will the tax deliver in terms of service. I know you've got your anticipated future expenditures, some of which are being imposed on you by the courts, others which are just long-awaited capital items and other services. You've got to balance the whole thing. And so what we suggested was if we could get to a higher percentage of that tax, assuming that that could provide the adequate transportation system that we're proposing, that that might be some common ground that we could reach.
Yeah, I just wanted to have that discussion because, you know, we're trying to reach some type of middle ground here, if possible. As I said, I, the votes aren't here for a designated quarter percent standalone for transit, so the next step, and I, and I thought was a, a very good compromise, was to say that we'd be willing to designate a portion of whatever would be passed and approved by voters for transit. But you said that twenty-five percent is not high enough. Where should that threshold be?
But I think, I think, you know, obviously, our preference is dedicated, but if, again, the focus would be on what would, however amount of money, you know, I, my, my thought is, let's get the biggest bang for our buck, you know, what can we, what can our voters voting in favor of this tax expect? What can we promise to them would be delivered? If, if we're on, if we're together and saying, we're going to provide those ten routes, we're going to provide that bus that comes every half hour, we're going to run that fourteen hours a day so that people can get to the employment they need. That's the system we think we need to start with, that backbone. If we can get together on that, in some ways, it doesn't matter how much money we're spending, right? We want to spend the least amount to get that system. So if, 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 you know, for example, if, if you were able to meet your obligations with a smaller percentage of that quarter percent sales tax, and we were able to deliver this public transportation system and fulfill those needs that we've identified, let's, let's do it. Not waste any time. Let's do it, and let's take our case to the voters together.
Because I know that you've talked about, you, you feel like the percentage needs to be higher because it needs to be more of a, sold as more of a transit
Right.
tax than anything else, even though,
So that we can deliver those services.
Even though, yeah, even though we have needs, serious financial needs.
Right.
So in a hypothetical world, if, even if a proposal were to come forward, and one hasn't yet, but even if this board were to consider splitting
Right.
the quarter percent, you're still saying that that wouldn't be sufficient for support?
If, if we're together on the promise that we're making to the voters, that we're saying, okay, based on everything we know, and all the numbers, the federal dollars that would come to us over time, that, you know, I, I really, and I know you do too, you believe in, in transparency in government and, and making promises that are kept. But I think we have to be very specific about the system that would be delivered in, in, in such a split tax.
But I, I just, I, just trying to get my arms around, you know, we're trying to get some movement here, trying to see if we can work out some type of a compromise, but that's why, you know, I'm asking these questions here.
Right.
So hypothetically, if we were to say that we would do a fifty percent split on the quarter percent, which no commitment by this board has made to do that yet.
Right.
Are you still saying that that wouldn't be enough, or that might be workable?
I, I can't see how the numbers line up in terms of delivering, you know, that system. If you, if you all were to do your own research and say, hey, you know, fifty, fifty-five, sixty, seventy-five, eighty, whatever it is, will deliver that system that we've outlined in terms of specifications, then I think we're on the same page.
Okay.
Excuse me. As a gentleman who spoke to some community leaders just as we started all this process, and talking about the ability to negotiate certain terms, and I'm the one who came up with the fifty-fifty split, actually, and shared that with my board that maybe is a possibility.
Yep.
But then the expectations probably won't meet what you had. Now, we could do some models, probably, on what that four and point seven five million dollars would do.
Right.
And give you maybe a best-case scenario, again. Yeah, I've talked, spoke to a lot of people throughout the community on this. It's not a matter of Lorain County spending the four point seven five million dollars all cash with no match.
Right.
It takes time to build up a system. In our discussion points, you guys also, you haven't given a whole lot of that, so we can talk clearly about it. It's not going to be that a sales tax passes in November. On January one, two thousand seventeen, we're going to have ten routes, thirty minutes. We can't even get buffs things up.
Right. We need to have a plan. We need to have a plan as to how that would be built out.
Correct. And the timeline to get there.
I think that's where we can come together.
I mean, those are the discussion points that aren't being had. I think the dollars and cents, which are very important, you don't have it without money. But I still think there have to be some scenarios run on possibly what that
Right.
four and a half million dollars. So I've got all our county numbers here, budget numbers with my director we're working, actually, we haven't talked yet about the county's needs.
Right.
This turned into another transit tax hearing, okay, no offense. But we have, we have also discussions about the general operations part. But I think our scenarios would have to run on what that could be, and then a timeline accordingly. I mean, you've got Ken Sislack, he's a wonderful guy.
Oh, yeah.
Transit inside and outside. Won't question his ability or what he knows in regards to transit. But still, from a, putting the project on the ground and making it work, I think we'd be better off from our people to get an idea of what the four point five or four point seven five million dollars a year would generate. And a timeline on acquiring the dollars in the match. I don't want to go out and buy buses at a hundred percent, Bill. I think that's totally irresponsible on our part.
Right.
When there can be eighty percent money out there if you get in line for it. So it may take a couple of years just to get twenty buses.
Sure.
Okay? So I don't want the public to think that we're going to go out and it passes, and we're up and running January one. It's going to take a couple of years' cycle to get into this. So what that does at four and a half million dollars, if the first year only two point two five or two point five get actually spent.
Right.
That's two point two five or two point three carried into the next year. It turns that four and a half million then into seven million towards moving money, which you have the same carryover going until you fully fund the system in five years. If that's the number we end up with, if it's a five-year versus a ten-year or whatever.
Right.
I don't want to focus on that part until we see what we can do for scenarios and run those out.
Yeah.
So I mean, if you want us to work something like that and a timeline, I mean, I'm sure, because we don't have another public hearing until a week from Tuesday, week from yesterday or something.
Week from today, I think, in the evening, correct?
No.
No, it's a Tuesday. I moved back to the Tuesday.
Oh, you moved back to the Tuesday.
Well, we've got the best of Lorain County on Wednesday. We didn't have that on our calendar out here.
Yeah, we don't want to miss that.
Right.
So, uh, I thank you for that. I want to be there, too.
I mean, I would entertain, you know, a fifty percent split and probably going out to a ten-year ballot issue. Okay?
Yeah.
For building it up, unless you would prefer the five-year issue on a discussion and then going, if we show the tax is successful, then going to the quarter percent special tax. I mean, those are the final negotiations that probably have to be made before we put this forward. But I don't want to put a lot of time and effort into this if Move's not interested in fifty percent in a full explanation.
I think if we're talking about building out a system over time, if we're talking about, obviously, taking advantage of those match dollars.
We have to.
And as, as you know, Ted, the, the match dollars are only available when, by resolution or by vote, the, of the people the tax is dedicated. So you can actually do that every year in terms of dedicating that to draw down the, the federal dollars. I know other jurisdictions do that. But if you had a vision, say, that would take this and move this, this transportation, have a plan that over a reasonable period of time, we would build out this transportation system to meet these specifications that we've laid out in, in terms of the need, I think we need to talk about that.
Or close to, or based on what the trends are of populations moving also. I mean, there's a whole lot involved, and I've spent a lot of years doing these things.
Yep.
There's a whole lot of other things, other than saying, we want twenty buses on the road, thirty-minute turnaround time, and that's what we're going to have. I mean, we've got the maintenance, we've got purchase of vehicles. I mean, there's a lot involved, plus getting into the funding revenues, improving you have the match dollars to maximize our ability to grab the most matched dollars.
Right. Right.
So I mean, I think a lot of that discussion points, even though you guys have done a very good job as a group, a lot of that has to be explained out to the public.
Right.
But I would not have a problem having our transit people take a look at some, some type of a scenario for next week, possibly.
That'd be great.
To discuss that. But I mean, I wouldn't be uncomfortable with a fifty percent split. And then showing us, you know, what could be, but it would be over a three- or four-year period to get to that point, because we can't spend all the money as it walks in the door. That's just irresponsible to the taxpayers to spend a hundred percent and get no match.
Right. Right. And I, you know, I think it's wise to go with a definite period of time, you know, first out of the box with a, a new tax as well, so that people, first of all, understand clearly what it's going to be spent on, what the deliverables are, but also realize that they're going to have another crack at it within a period of time and, and not on a continuing basis. I think that's a wise move as well. But absolutely, the critical thing for us is what will this deliver and when, and how can we come together to, to build this out? Because we really do believe that this will contribute significantly to a revitalization of our county, particularly our, our downtown and our, our neighborhoods that are, are suffering, and we want to see that happen. So let's get together and figure it out.
I don't think anybody disagrees on that board, but it's got to be done in a proper manner of looking forward on how we're going to do this, and the actual implementation to the public so they know what we're talking about, not an expectation that's unreachable.
Right. Exactly. So, yeah, our preference, absolutely dedicated quarter percent sales tax, but, you know, what was, there was that one quote that, "Politics are the art of the possible," so that's what we'll try to do.
Mr. Curtis, I hate to put you on the spot, but back when we were spending the most we ever spent, I think it was like one point five million of local general fund dollars for transit, what did our transit system look like then, as far as wait times and buses on the road?
The wait times was significantly reduced, obviously. There was a lot of rolling stock. I will suggest, I didn't think the routing was very efficient back in those days. The Board of Commissioners weren't in charge of the transit routing in those days, and we received a lot of criticism for underutilization of the system. I just think that was a routing issue. I don't think it, I think they just put a lot of buses on the road, road and, and rolled them. I think with, with some of the tools that are out there, in fact, we applied for some grant money for some tools that will able enable us to track routes better, ridership better, and, and bring that efficiencies that I think Brian and Bill have spoken to. That software wasn't available back then. They used to just drive around in the car and follow the bus and try to figure out where to put bus stops. It was pretty fundamentally flawed. But, but the service, I would suggest, even then, was, was, was flawed. But there was more opportunity to get on the bus. The biggest piece is back then, we had, we had stock rolling south, and it's very limited rolling down to Oberlin and Wellington these days. In fact, I don't think it really much rolls past Oberlin. We used to go to Wellington, the fair, and put special routing on, but the biggest loss was the, the airport line that used to be able to bring people to the airport. Oberlin College in particular was a heavy utilizer of that service. And since today, we, we can't get people to the airport. And downtown Cleveland, those two things are really, really necessary, and, and they really weren't that well planned in the early two thousands, and it will take considerable amount of money to do that right now, as Bill has suggested. Without those two things, you can move people around in Lorain County, but we also need to move around in and out of Lorain County.
Yeah, I think something that we should talk about, obviously, we've talked about the greater Cleveland RTA system. Could be cheaper, could... could be cheaper, could enable us to build out more quickly. That would be whatever arrangement you wanted to make, a contract with them, which would also give you options down, down the line if, if it didn't pan out. You wouldn't have a bunch of employees necessarily that you were, you know, directly employing. But we think, certainly a regional transit system, we are a region economically, Ted, you know this, you all know this, and, and so whatever we can do to become a part of, a greater part of that regional economy, connect our people, we know, you can go to the parking rides in, in Westlake and, and North Olmsted, Brook Park, and see a lot of 47s on the backs of those license plates, right?
RTA was, was a good partner in the early 2000s with transfers.
Yep.
It worked real well. But I think what, what we need to see is, we need to see, what I see downtown when I'm there is, I see the Lake tram buses down there, we need to see the Lorraine County transit buses down there. We need to give people the shortest distance to a parking ride, and then a, a solution that brings them downtown and connects them with the RTA downtown, rather than having to get on and off buses and stand in the cold, or take three, three different connections to get to a job. 50% of the people leave Lorraine County to go to work.
Right.
They, they, maybe they have a car, but they also need cost-effective transportation, and mass transit is what's going to bring it to them. So, you know, I think that a solution that involves RTA is definitely something that needs to be discussed with regard to partnering on succession of services as people go further.
I just want to get, once again, I guess I'm trying to get clarification here, because obviously, we want this process to move forward, we want to see if we can get something worked out. When Commissioner Kelo brought up the idea of a 50-50 split, you and I had a conversation, and, you know, I just think it's important to talk about whether this 50-50 split is something that is really workable or not, because I know you had indicated to me you thought it should be three-fourths of that amount.
And I think the reason for that, Matt, is what does it deliver? If it's, it's really not the money that's the issue, other percentage of it. What's, what's at the issue is, what does that deliver? We couldn't, if, if you were to share with us a plan where that would get us where we need to go, that's where we come together. We honestly cannot see how that gets us to the system that we need. If, if that's part of a plan to get us there, absolutely, we'll consider that in terms of Move's support. But that's what we need to hear from you, not so much just the slicing of the pie, but what does it deliver?
Yeah, and it's just, you know, we have to, we have a responsibility to operate, you know, county government, and with our future financial picture looking very bleak and very dark, you know, we have to cover our expenditures as well too, and we're trying to work out a partnership here that will, will benefit both initiatives, or both needs.
Right.
And, you know, I just think three-quarters of that would be, that would be just not workable, I don't see that being workable.
Yeah, I think another issue for us was based on, our polling of, of likely voters was based on a transit tax, and one that was dedicated to that. The more, the higher percentage of the proposal that is dedicated to transportation through Commissioner Resolution, I think the better chance we have to get it passed as well, if we can frame this as a transit tax that also takes care of some of the county needs. And that would, in my mind, you could frame it that way if a majority of the, of the funds were being used for transit. So that's just in terms of getting it passed. All of this obviously is moved, if we can't get voters to support it.
Yeah, but I think as Commissioner Kelo pointed out, you know, we need to paint the real picture for the public, and the real picture is, you know, starting January 1 of the following year, you're not going to have all these routes running, and everybody getting picked up in, in, you know, in a half hour, and all these other things, you've got to transition it in, it's, it's not going to happen overnight.
But I think we need to see a solid commitment to what, what it would look like when it's built out, and what that plan is. Plans can change, but if, if at least the thought has been put to, this is what it will deliver on this day, you know, this year, this year, this year, we're building it out, bringing in the federal dollars, purchasing, if necessary, the rolling stock, or contracting to have that delivered. Obviously, it all has to be done in a smart way, from a management standpoint.
Scenario planning, that's just what has to be done.
Exactly.
You've got to be running scenario planning, it's done all the time.
That's what we need to do, yeah.
If you can let us work on this week and look at the 50% number for Move, and Bill and Brian chairing the committee, and see what a scenario would play out, then, I mean, we'll get you some, maybe it's not going to be exact, I mean, it's going to be broad-based, but.
Based on, based on the information we have, yeah.
Exactly, but I think we can have our people run some numbers and some ideas of where you'd be. It may not be 10 buses, it may be eight, you know, but we'll do some scenario planning and see if it's agreeable to you guys.
Okay, appreciate it, thanks for the dialogue.
Thanks, Bill, thank you. Anybody else wishing to comment on transit this time? Okay. And probably, what we'd like to do is, is cover some time talking about, you know, our future budget needs as well too. And did you want to make some comments at this point?
Sure, absolutely.
Might as well stick around, this is the other part of the half, a quarter percent. Lorraine County, as Matt has said, and Lori and I have been here many years, juggling what we do and don't do to try and make things happen. Were these put out, Lisa, for anybody?
I have them all right here, I didn't know if you were.
Yeah, if anybody wants to look at it, we just got some of the outstanding debt requests for next year's tax budget from our departments, our current debt service, our upcoming debt service, for those of you who've looked at us and watched what's going on, you see we've been going out for more bonds to take care of capital problems, and Bill actually mentioned that. But if you take a historical perspective of the county, our revenue and expenditures going back to '07, our revenues were about $59 million, and our expenditures were about $60 million. In '08, we had $59 million approximately revenues, we had $63 million in expenditures. And we always had a good carryover balance to take care of that from previous really good years. And as we've gone down, as low as 2012, we had a $47 million revenue year, that's almost $14 million less than what we had in '07 and '08. We cut our expenditures down to $50 million. In 2015, still, government expenditures were $55 million. Again, still, in an eight-year period, 10% less than what we spent in '07. So I mean, we've done our due diligence, juggling the county budget and trying to make things happen. We laid off a third of our general fund in, at the end of '08, going into '09. And haven't brought yet 90% of those back. We did have some help from other departments in regards to this, using special funds and such, but those have winded down. Just general costs have gone up over the years, we've tried to juggle what we have. Our department budgets this year are around $59 million for expenditures to operate county government. The request, the tax budget, which all the departments turn in, is slightly over $61 million to operate next year. That's just normal healthcare cost, cost of operating, which is about $1 million more. So we've got that off the bad short on top of the couple million we were short this year. So that's where this 50-50 split, I almost got figured out, might work, at $4 million. Then we have, going forward, all the discussions about the capital costs within this. We have various capital improvements, roof, parking lot repairs, upgrades to offices at the Justice Center, replacing windows, gas-water heater at the jail. I mean, the jail passed a quarter percent tax in 1995 for expansion, it's 20-plus years, it needs updating. Now, we've got the renovation of the county courthouse across the street for adult probation, does twofold. We don't have to build out in the current Justice Center, which is a 50 to 75-year building, for any additional justice needs, and it saves the county courthouse. Nobody wanted to see that boarded up, I don't think we made a very pretty picture in the middle of downtown Lorraine, I'm sure Mayor Brendan Council wouldn't have been happy. And we did have to purchase a building for our Lorraine County Veteran Services. They've worked very well with us over the years, they were stuck in the job of family services, building, muzzled in between child support, welfare, workforce development. Now, going forward, that's about $5 million bucks that we've committed to in the past year to take care of in future, in borrowing. Our future borrowing we're looking at is between $3 million and $7 million for the Justice Division, the courts, clerk of courts, prosecutor, in regards to a case management system. They've all on different programs, they're all 15 years old, and they all need upgrading. They're going out for requests for proposals now that we approved last week, to see a case management system that everybody talks to each other. The finishing of the renovation of the courthouse, an additional $1.003, and then additional capital projects, $1.005. So we're looking at our $6 to $7 million in additional borrowing we're going to have to make on top of the $5 million so far. So that's where we're getting to our general operations side of a quarter percent sales tax, or roughly $4.5 million to try and continue county government moving forward. I've spent a lot of time on the budget over the years, they always kid me, my best friend in county government's my budget director. He's here and I meet just about every day on what we've got coming before us. I'll give up talking now, I've got two other commissioners, but again, also, we've got our budget director here who can give any clarification, because for the few government people we've got in the office, government financing is a little bit different than your personal checkbook, right, Joe and Mark?
May I add something to your?
Sure, go ahead.
Let's look at this year's budget for a moment. What's not easily identified in this year's budget is that we have two one-time events that are shoring up the budget to the tune of $2.75 million, one-time events. So where that $2.75 million is going to come from next year is anyone's guess. We're able to thin the reserves on, on some of our liability insurances, using sound actuarial practices that, that allowed us to take a greater risk, but with a keen understanding of what those risks were, that movement of funds was, allowed us to balance the budget this year. We're also selling some property that's anticipated to bring another million dollars. That, those funds are being used as operating dollars this year. They're not funds that are going to come in and go into unappropriate monies or be put into the carryover, they're being used in the operation. So somehow, they have to be replaced next year just for a par budget. And that doesn't take into any consideration the increase in cost that we're going to have next year, and the fact that we've been pushing down on all these expenses, in addition to the debt service requirements that are going to come with all the work that's being done, because right now, on your behalf, I've been recapitalizing all of those costs into short-term borrowing notes. So we're, we're recapitalizing our interest on that work in addition to that work. And eventually, that's, has to go to permanent financing, and the debt service will have to become part of the operating budget. And those are things, just real quick, just for this year's budget, not even into the future budget. And of course, when we, again, we have additional facilities for veterans, which they well-deserved and was well overdue, we have all the operating costs that come with that too. You don't move out of one building, buy another building, and your costs stay par, costs go up. And they continue to provide services, and while their budget increases were moderate, they, there were increases. And people don't understand a few things. The courts get to order their budget, Veteran Services pretty much gets to order their budget, although it really isn't written that way, but it doesn't give you any ability to modify what they actually need. I'm not going to say these people haven't been good partners, but we've seen increased costs that you have no ability to do anything much about. And, and of course, we have the big move with the courthouse. We talked about the renovation, Commissioner Kelo, but also, we have to relocate the whole department. Preparing a building right now to relocate them into.
We're starting to see some of those costs come across our desk now, just for the move.
Exactly, and then once the building's empty, we're going to renovate it and then move them back. That may sound, some out there, not very efficient, but it is, because we'll, we'll have an additional building when that, when that move's done, it was, it was much more efficient than trying to rent space all over, and we already had the building, we just had to do some updates to that existing building to make sure it could house them for the approximate two years that this event's going to take. And there's a, there's a list of additional things, that's quite long, but, you know, so is some of the big ones. The big ones at $2.75 million, it's not going to be there next year because of one-time events.
And if those don't come to fruition this year, we're going to have to be looking at some serious cuts.
I don't know about cuts, Commissioner, I do know that, that there is some challenges that we're still facing, we still haven't received that revenue in, in some areas. I'm hopeful that that's going to end the way we thought it would, but there's still some potential that it may not, as you are aware. And as far as cuts go, the cuts that were made when, when the budget was greatly reduced, and we saw even shrinking, additional shrinking resources, Commissioner Kelo indicated that 90% of those have not been restored, and they have not been restored. I know people like to think bad about their government, but we're pretty lean. It's, it's more than muscle, it's almost into the bone. You say cuts, it'll, it'll be, it'll be not just cuts of people, but cuts in services and closures. There, there simply is no place else, everything is one deep, so that's something to consider. That, all you have to do is look in the parking lot, it used, eight years ago, I rented lots all over town to, to provide parking for our employees. I don't rent any of those lots anymore, and the parking deck's not full, has not been for a number of years.
Another thing that's not on our capital expenditure list is the parking garage is in need of a major overhaul or redo, so.
So, and there's, there's a lot of things, it may sound like simple justifying your position, but these are very credible and need to be acknowledged, you know, going forward, that those responsibilities have to, have to be met. I'd also like to mention that if we had not seen the bond market stay in the basement that it stayed in for the last seven or eight years, we'd probably have to ask the taxpayers for far less. We went from almost $8 million in interest income down to less than $1 million in one year of interest income. That $7 million of, of revenue that disappeared during the recession that has not reappeared because the bond market has not significantly recovered, we're still only seeing a million to a million-two, if we were seeing a few million more, maybe not at the peak, because you do ride the yield curve, we would be in a better situation and, and maybe able to meet the demands that folks are asking you to meet more, more quickly and more fully as a cooperative partner. I don't see the bond marketing, bond market moving anytime soon. In fact, you know, they're predicting that it's going to stay bottomed out for a little while longer, and even if it starts to move, you're three or four years behind that yield curve before you see sufficient revenue from those, those county investments. People don't realize that that shift is, is major, nothing to do with your governance whatsoever. But that money was still necessary, and it wasn't there. So we have been doing one-time solutions, selling property, financing police cars for the sheriff's department. And Commissioner Kelo also talked about the quarter percent in, as sales tax for the jail. That's actually a commissioner's tax that they passed to operate the jail when they did the extension on the jail in the mid-'90s. That sales tax was, was, was hard fought, they really needed the half percent, they did a quarter percent. It's been inadequate to fund the whole operation of the jail, the general fund. Out of our half a percent, we send about $3 to $3.5 million to the jail, they do a great job out there. But, but they also have some needs, and we put them under the capital improvements that we've been doing. But remember, before the recession, they were talking about the need for a new jail at $60 million, and that was eight or nine years ago. That need hasn't gone away, it's just that right now, everybody's keenly aware that there's not sufficient ability to meet that demand, but it's still going to be an issue in the next couple of years that you're going to have to confront.
Investments in the past, what, $7 million a year, and now about a million, a little over a million?
Seven and a half, 7.6, correct.
So, yeah, when you go from that side of the ledger, seeing that big of a drop, that's a tremendous problem for the county. And as I said before, when I was seeking this office, a lot of people told me the budget was, you know, it's going to be a real challenge moving forward, and I just want to commend my colleagues for keeping things afloat this long. I know it's been a lot of, a lot of work and a lot of tough decisions, but nobody's, nobody's spending like drunk sailors around here. We're just trying to pay the bills and keep the lights on, and it's become a real challenge, and that's why it's important, as was pointed out during this meeting, that, you know, transit is a big part of the discussion, but we cannot overlook the importance of keeping the county financially sound, and, and that, you know, if we got to the point of Commissioner Kelo's recommendation, doing this 50-50 split potentially, that, you know, we're just going to have enough money to pay the bills, there's not going to be any excess money left over. So that's why I said before that three-quarters of, a quarter percent, just, that, that wouldn't be financially feasible or financially responsible at this point. But as I've said before, I knew, you know, our finances were dark, didn't realize how dark they were and how bad they were, but this is just a reality of where we're at right now, we haven't received much. We haven't received much help from Columbus. We say over and over again the cavalry's not coming. We're on our own. We've got to pay our own bills and find a way to survive on our own because Columbus is certainly not concerned about how we operate. So, we welcome, you know, the feedback and the input regarding transit, but please understand that we have some serious finances that we have to address as well, too. Any other comments, questions? Mark Coleman, want to come up to the podium, please?
You're scary up at this podium.
No. You're an accountant, you know. Guys are used to working with numbers, not talking in front of people all the time, so.
Thanks for the insight into the expenditures. That's very helpful, but I would like to make one follow-up comment, that we're talking about increasing transportation, public transportation, and MOVE's research shows that that should stimulate the economy, and that should translate into increased revenue for the county. So, let's not lose sight of that, is what I was thinking as I was hearing about the expenses. If this works according to plan, it's going to improve the revenue stream for the county. Thank you.
Mark, it's under a sales tax, so a quarter of a percent increase. You're not looking at exponential, like a company moving into Amazon, getting income tax. You know what I'm saying? It's more of an indirect effect than a direct effect because those people that they're getting to, and a lot of the companies we've talked to have been the lower paying for our companies who are trying to get employees there. I mean, the people we've spoke with, you know, anywhere from $10 to $12 or $13 an hour, those people who are new employment still aren't going to have a significant amount necessary of income tax, of sales tax expenditures or what they currently have, whereas the income tax boost will really help the community, bringing more workers in to help those companies. So, it's more of a direct transit effect in regards to. That's where, years ago, Jim and I met with councils across the county, talking to them about going, we would love to have the cities participate, direct influx of cash into our system that we could use for federal dollars match to help improve our transit. Jim?
We did approach most of the communities. There was somewhat a lack of support, I will say, Obolyn stepped to the plate, and there was a time Avon Lake was able to bring funding to the county. I want to acknowledge that they were good partners, but Obolyn continued. Avon Lake was unable to, at the time, continue with that. So, we did try different options of raising revenue. We've also solicited the state many times through ODOT. We've received some assistance through some of their funding for transit. So, it's not for lack of wanting to build the partnerships. And then, there was a big initiative a few years back to ESC where they were talking about how to bring everybody together and leverage those dollars, but that seemed to have fizzled, too, you know, the needs there.
Well, I've gotten myself in the unenviable position of being up here talking about something that I don't have all the facts and figures about.
There is a, I mean, there will be some bump for those who are getting back into the employment, you know what I'm saying, to expend more dollars, but in regards to sales tax, it's a quarter of a percent of a sales tax. So, there isn't that much. When you're on a split 50-50, it becomes an eighth of a sales tax for general operations.
Well, just quickly off the cuff, trying to reason through this as an accountant, what I'm thinking is that expanding the economy in Lorraine County is going to increase property values and things like that because there's going to be a spinoff into people who are working jobs and who are buying homes, and maybe the housing market will increase. In my mind, I can see how this could benefit county revenues.
It could. So, let's go there for a second. First, the bulk, the vast bulk of property revenue, such that sales tax is a big driver for us. It's probably the best source of income because we're not allowed to levy income taxes. So, you know, economic improvement in the county, does it help us? Yes, it does. Does it help us quickly? Not usually. So, you know, it's hard to do a balancing act with that.
Bill?
Hi. I just wanted to come to Mark's, you know, assistance here in terms of, and you just touched on it, Jim, yeah, the idea that there's a lot of evidence that public transportation does lead to a more vibrant economy whereby, I mean, if you just go on the $9,000 that a person's going to be saving if they don't have to maintain an old, you know, rickety car, that's dollars that they can purchase other things, obviously contribute to the sales tax, but obviously, property taxes. We know that home values, on average, increase by 42% when they're near public transportation. Certainly, more and more with the millennials, as well as older adults looking to stay in their homes. They want to be near a bus, stop, so that they can get to where they need to go. We've heard time and time again, just terrible circumstances that people find themselves living in food deserts and job deserts in our neighborhoods, in our urban core, but also in our rural areas where people are lonely and isolated, and we need to remedy that. So, I think there is great evidence that, over time, and that's what we have to think of in the long term, what kind of community, what kind of county do we want? We can't be simply slaves to our current circumstances. We have to have that vision for the future, and hopefully, we can come together around what that vision can be for public transportation.
As a thought, the, I would, I don't think this has been said out here, and I think it needs to be, individually and with me on many occasions, since the beginning of the year, we have been talking about a sales tax increase. This didn't happen with the Board of Commissioners when MOVE started doing their necessary work in the community. So, I'd really like to point out that we were having conversations about county needs early in the year and what we may need to do come November. So, I don't want anybody to think that MOVE came forward, nor suddenly the county said it needed a sales tax. Those conversations were being had, and we knew this summer we had to have them publicly, and certain aspects of the high revised code would need to be accomplished to be able to put an initiative before the taxpayer. One of the biggest fears, and I'll share this with you, is that if the board puts on a sales tax and they allow room for MOVE to put on a sales tax, that we're going to be competitors in the marketplace.
Right.
And we both may lose if we become competitors.
Right.
And, you know, trying to balance that has become a challenge because the last thing we want to do is be a competitor, but we still need revenue.
Right.
And so, I just wanted to say to you and to Brian and the other folks here that have put in their time and volunteered, we don't want to be a competitor.
Right.
You know, and so, we're trying to struggle to find a way to be a collaborator so that we don't offset each other on the ballot because I'm not sure that the public has an appetite for two-quarter percents.
Yeah, yeah. And I think, in that regard, again, all this is moot if we don't
Right.
get people to vote for it, and at least based on our research, the ability to frame this as a transit levy, we think is contingent on a majority of the funds going to public transportation, has to fit with the plan. The best we can put it together, that delivers the maximum amount of service, but we need to frame this as a transit levy. We think that has its best chance of passing. The, you know, I've, in my public service, had the great opportunity of trying to make those numbers fit in the past in my mental health days, and appreciate what you're going through, but I also know that, to the voter out there, it's a hard sell. It gets pretty complicated. It is very complex and a little bit esoteric to sell. We think we have something, in terms of the service to our community, we have something that we can sell to voters, and maybe together, we can make this a stronger county.
And I think if we're all working on this together, I think we have a much better chance of this passing. And I also think the stepping up, starting with the lower dollar amount, and then moving on, maybe five years from now, and get, donate, or putting a full quarter on for transit may be something that the public, once they see the transit getting better and better, they would be, have a more appetite to go ahead and put a full quarter on in the future.
If we can agree on a plan, that's what we need to do. So, thank you.
Yeah, and I'd like to echo those thoughts, you know, whether we, whether this board should consider and adopt Commissioner Kelo's idea of splitting this quarter percent or not, it's still critical that we work in partnership and collaboration because we have to keep moving forward on the transit issue.
Thank you.
Any other questions or comments? Okay. Then we'll move to close the public hearing.
Second.
Mr. Lundey.
Aye.
Mr. Gallo.
Aye.
Aye.
And we can wait a few minutes if you're more than welcome to stay.
Mr. Cortez.
I have one issue from the floor. We had some emergency repairs. I'll pass this to the clerk. That needed to be done. Contractor came in, did some work on storm sewers, damaged some sanitary sewers, didn't make reconnects, couldn't get the contractor to come out and make the repairs. We had to do an emergency repair for two homeowners. We need to pay the contractor we called, and then we will be filing claims against the first contractor who has failed to adequately pay for that repair. So, it was an emergency. I'm asking the board to approve this. It's sanitary engineers' funds, but it won't be left there. We're going to go after the contractor that damaged the laterals on behalf of the homeowners and the sanitation department and try to recover those funds.
So, we're going to authorize payment to Personal Plumber Service Corp., Polari, in the amount of $2,806.48 for the repairs, a sanitary sewer lateral repair at 66 Edgewood Drive, Grafton, Carlisle Township.
Yeah, so move.
Second.
Discussion. Mr. Lundey.
Aye.
Mr. Gallo.
Aye.
Ms. Kowski.
I have no additional comments. It's been a long morning. Thank you.
Mr. Anas.
I have one issue of potential purchase of real estate.
Commissioner's report. This last Thursday, I had a meeting with our stepping up team and stakeholders. Thank you, Jim and Ted, for attending. We had about 30 people in attendance. Boils down to, our criminal justice system should not be there to ruin people's lives. It should be the last resort for people and not the first resort. People with mental illness and co-occurring addiction issues may need treatment and not incarceration. So, the more I'm learning about this issue, I know we have a steep hill to climb, but like the saying goes, it may not be easy, but I'm sure it will be worth it. Friday, I was on the radio station, two different radio stations this past week, talking about Energy Up with Voltage, who wrote the Sugar Savvy Solutions book and was here for a grant, didn't get the grant, but they are having today the kickoff at the Boys and Girls Club of Lorraine, and Thursday at the Charleston Coffee House, and Friday at Johnny Wilson School. It's to take the pledge, 24 grams of sugar in a 24-hour period and rethink your drink. Definitely been making me look at labels lately just to see how much sugar is in things that you would never think sugar was in, like ketchup and, you know, just all kinds of things. So, things that you think are healthy, vitamin water and Gatorade, and there's just sugar in everything. So, people are, a lot of people are addicted to sugar and need to take the pledge. So, hopefully, the data will prove that the program works, and we hopefully will be able to continue this and move it not just in Lorraine, but all of Lorraine County. End of my report.
Thank you. Hopefully, everyone had an enjoyable, of course, getting along meeting. Pass it on to you, Mr. Lundey. Geez, that was quick, okay. Had a chance to attend along with Commissioner Kelo, had skimmin' of emergent with the launch of the LC Explorer app for Droid. I think you started that initiative.
Yes, I did. You yelled out when he did the iPhone. What are we doing, Droids? Took him a year, but that was good. Great program.
And he said, he had people contacting him to say they were excited about it coming to Droid, and asked if he had an app for iPhone. He said, "We already have that one," so. But the LC Explorer is really exciting, so no reason to even leave Lorraine County. There are lots of good events going on that LC Explorer will let you know about each and every weekend, so, or throughout the week. Also, yes, congratulations all the communities with their fireworks shows. I had a chance to see the fireworks show in Avon on Sunday night at the Crusher's game. They had a packed house there, as they always do for fireworks each year, and also would encourage folks to come out for some great ice cream on Sunday at the Lorraine County Historical Society. They're at the lawn of the Hickory's from 1 until 4 o'clock, always a really great, really great event. Some neat antique cars there, too, if you like old cars, so. And that completes my report.
Next Tuesday, at the 12th, at 9:30, we'll have our final hearing on the Guthrie Ditch, and at 6:00 PM that night, our final sales tax hearing. Board correspondents?
I move to approve the board correspondence and waive the reading.
Second.
Discussion. Mr. Lundey.
Aye.
Mr. Gallo.
Aye.
Ms. Kowski. Aye.
Public comment?
Anyone wishing to make any public comment to the board? I think we covered a lot of discussion this morning, so. So, I would move at this time that we go into executive session, discuss personnel issues outlined by the county administrator and the legal issues that were outlined by the assistant prosecutor.
Second.
Mr. Lundey.
Aye.
Mr. Gallo.
Aye.
Ms. Kowski. Aye.
This has been a broadcast of the recent Lorraine County Commissioners' General Meeting. Unless otherwise announced, meetings are held Wednesday morning at 9:30 at the Administration Building, 226 Middle Avenue, 4th floor, downtown Alariah. These are public meetings, and you are invited to attend. Agendas are posted prior to the meeting at www.lorainecounty.us. Click on Departments to see the Commissioners' page, and click on View Agenda for a printable copy of